Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Pavloski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, March 16th. First item on our agenda is public participation. I'd like to begin tonight by explaining some key points about our public participation policy for those in attendance, to those of you who are watching at home, and for the many residents that emailed us over the last two weeks. We did receive several emails from residents who were disappointed that the committee did not respond to some open questions posed during the last meeting, that we just sat there and didn't respond. This is not the intent of public participation, and let me clarify. The committee's role is to listen to resident concerns, not respond or debate. It's important to understand that this isn't a Q&amp;A session or debate time with the committee. Under Section 10 of Policy 123, it states, "Public participation is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. Comments made during public participation do not reflect the views or the positions of the school committee. The constitutional free speech rights of participants in public participation will be respected." Again, our role in participation, in public participation, is to listen to your concerns. We'll take your comments under advisement. You will, you will not be spoken over or interrupted, and I expect the respectful discourse at all times from everyone in the room. The policy calls for a maximum of six speakers per meeting under Section 5, scheduled in advance with the chair. Tonight, we've, we have received six requests to speak. In the interest of fairness and equity, all speakers will have up to three minutes to address the committee. Please be respectful of your time. I will have a countdown clock here so you can, you can know how much time that you have left. As you approach the standing mic, please introduce yourself, for the record, full name and your street address. With that, I will call you up in the order that these requests were received, starting with Mr. Jeffrey Sosa-Pacat.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Sosa-Pacat. I've already announced my address. I'm not going to do that again. As a blended family of one white, one brown, and openly gay, and stuff, had my daughter read a poem about the beating of Matthew Shepard to the school, I would have taken as much issue with that. No one in that school or in our community is to blame for the death of Matthew Shepard any more than our children are responsible for the death of George Floyd. That shouldn't have happened. Unfortunately, how do our children learn to take responsibility and actually learn when our school board and superintendent hide behind Black History Month, George Floyd, and allow something to be read that a majority of the poem had nothing to do with George Floyd? Like the white media lady talking about looting, or jumping at people, or guns being shot at George Floyd? None of those things were accurate. None of those things happened. But yet, our superintendent and our principal stood behind the kids and blamed the children instead of taking responsibility. That's unacceptable. Then, John, you read out rules, but last school board meeting, Lindsay, in her official capacity, announced that she wants to run for school board. That violates the laws and campaign-like laws. That should have never happened. Then Jason Palich decides to pat every one of yous on the back, basically saying, "It is unfortunate that this board has to tolerate parents like me having to stand up and speak." I emailed him, and his response to me was, "I stand by my words." So Jason, the community is gonna stand by our words, and like Hannah Kane, you got defeated there, we're gonna defeat you again, whether it be by recall, challenge the board, the school's boards, bonds, I'm sorry, or by election. But you, sir, should not be part of our school board if you think so little of the parents of the community that you supposedly represent. You should be ashamed of yourself. You made an honest mistake. Hopefully, you look at compliance before you use your official office to say that you're running for public office. It's illegal, and you can be fined for it. That's up to the parents in Shrewsbury to decide how far they want to push that. But please, make sure, again, none of us do that. And so, you know, moving from there, instead of spending $45,000 on diversity surveys for our seven-to-12-year-old kids, how about you put that $45,000 into after-school programs where our children can read whatever poems they want because they opted in, and not 1,100 people had a poem read to them that was not accurate? And so, we all support Black History, and every one of us are absolutely heartbroken at what happened to George Floyd, but it didn't belong in our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sosa. No clapping, please. Order. Thank you. Okay. So there was a student that had requested to speak tonight, but the, my understanding is that the Black History Committee submitted a letter that I will read during my chairperson's report. So with that, we'll move on to the next speaker, which is Patience. And if you'd just say your full name and street address, please.
My name is Dr. Patience Hemenway, 5111 Avalon Way, Shrewsbury, Mass., 01545.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I just wanted to say thank you to the school board for everything that you have been doing, and I just wanted to read an email that I received a while ago that made me re-fall in love with the school. So on October 2nd, 2021, at 3:21 PM, I received a reminder for a mental health awareness walk. And below, I'll quote what the email said, "The mental health and emotional well-being of everyone in our community is of paramount importance. We know that there are many who are struggling with challenges, and it is important to know that there are resources you can access for assistance." I was very happy to see that. And impromptu, I just picked up my daughter, I said, "We are going for this walk," because she's Ms. Shrewsbury. She's black, and she's excited. And she told me on our way there that, "Mommy, I have some of these feelings, and I am happy to be there." And that's the first time I met you, sir, walking in that walk, so I was very happy to do that. So I, apart from being Dr. Patience Hemenway, I am the founder of Patience, Serenity Grove, and the founder of an anxiety support group on Facebook. Most people are on there because of a lot of things going on, and they have, most of them are there because of their children going through things that they cannot even express. Whilst I was coming here today, I dressed up, and my daughter told me, she is just 10 years old, she just turned 10 yesterday. She's a lipia baby, so it wasn't on the calendar officially, but hey, she's 10. So she said, "Mommy, don't go." I said, "Why?" She said, "You'll get in trouble." I said, "Why would I get in trouble?" She said, "Because we cannot speak." I said, "No, that's not what it means. Our voice matters." I'm also an international bestselling author of the book, Your Voice Matters. So it is important that you speak up, no matter what. Just speak up. Speak and say what you need to say. So before this meeting, before tonight, she told me not to come. She had been very active in participating in the History Month that she belongs in. So when I told her what had happened, she said, "Mommy, so will I get in trouble because I participated in Black History Month?" She turned and looked at me with fear in her eye because she was concerned, she doesn't want to get in trouble. All she wanted to do was participate in her own little way of Black History Matter, but I told her that's not what it is. So I'm here to just let you know that she is not in high school yet, she is just 10, but that the effect of what is happening are actions or inaction that children are watching, and they want to know if they can speak, if they will get in trouble if that happens. So please, whatever happens, please remember that the mental health and the emotion and well-being of everyone, whether directly impacted or far away, is very important. And there are adults who are going through stuff, and they cannot speak. And that is why a group of people during the time of the issue happening, that is the center of this situation, wrote a book that became an international bestselling author about Your Voice Matters, because sometimes you don't get to speak, but you have to say it somewhere, either being an author or being a poet. So let us allow people to speak and not take things out of context. Thank you for your time, and thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Hemenway. Thank you. Next on the list to speak today is Dr. Raymond.
Thank you. My name is Adnan Grahman of 19 Whipple Drive. I am speaking to you, first of all, as an ally of school admins who have been doing a great job at running our schools, and as a concerned parent. We've been here in Shrewsbury for about 10 years, and one of the reasons why we chose Shrewsbury was because of its excellent school system, and because the school system represents the diversity of America and diversity of humanity, and I think that is something we should be proud of. And for the most part, in our 10-year stay in Shrewsbury has been one of peaceful coexistence. We have felt very safe here. Unfortunately, over the past several years, because of the national climate of xenophobia and racism against minorities, against people of color, that ritual has now reached Shrewsbury, and is beginning to get louder, though it's a minority, but the, the aggression of that minority is now a deep concern for people like me who are sending our students to the school system here. And we would want to make sure that the current climate does not continue. Now, in speaking to the students who have been involved, the students in question in regards to Black History Month, it has come to my attention that they explicitly reached out to admins of the school, seeking reassurance and support for their safety, and the responses they received have been less than satisfactory, and I think this should not continue to happen. You have to take a proactive stance. The children did not mean any harm. They were pouring their hearts out on a single day out of the year, because for students of color, what's happened to George Floyd is for them an existential threat. You have to try to appreciate the anxiety of students. I've also come to learn that students during the school day had to figure out their own kind of a security detail. They had to figure out that they were not going to walk the hallways alone. They should not have to do that. That's your responsibility. And so, let us try to do better next time. This all, this took us, all of us, by surprise by the actions of an individual who seems to be desperate for support, for votes, and who would stoop to the level of endangering the lives of minors and sharing that on social media with national figures who are, who have nobody's, you know, nobody's concern in their mind. And so, this is really an act of a coward. No decent father would do that. I do not understand why someone else would put somebody else's children in a, in a situation of harm like this. And so, it's vile, it's despicable, and it's cowardly, and people like that should be ashamed of themselves. And I hope that we in Shrewsbury will not allow this to be the new, new face of the Republican Party here. Thank you very much for your time.
Next on our list to speak tonight is Ms. Bridget Hilton.
Good evening. Superintendent Sawyer, Chairperson Wensky. I'm speaking to you tonight as a resident of Shrewsbury. I attended Shrewsbury Schools. I, any people in my family did as well, and I'm pretty much a lifelong resident. We're deeply troubled by a community member's politicization of the poem read during the Shrewsbury High School Black History Month Assembly, and have serious concerns that his outburst may have direct, personal consequences for the students involved in the assembly and other students in Shrewsbury Schools. We are likewise concerned about the announced after-school meetings for dialogue regarding the event that were arranged given the current climate. We're worried that these meetings, even though we're hopeful that they'll be productive, may not be facilitated by someone who's been trained in racial sensitivity and equity, as they should be at this time. We're concerned that the students involved in particular are being bullied and harassed by their peers, as well as adult community members who should know better, and we want to know that the appropriate steps are being taken to ensure their safety. Schools should be a place where respectful dialogue is welcomed and encouraged, not silenced. We cannot have that if our students are going to be viciously attacked by adults in our community for utilizing their freedom of speech. The poem that was read, and it's been reviewed by many adults in this room in various forms, should have evoked sympathy. It should have evoked support for the pain that these students were feeling around the death of George Floyd. Instead, they were called horrible names online. Even if you don't agree with the merits of the piece, if you don't agree with its artistic relevance, it should not have caused grownups in our community to call these children garbage, vile filth, and disgusting. And these are all screenshotted comments that were made online by people in our community. These types of comments were not just directed at students, but also at Shrewsbury's hard-working teachers and administrators who don't deserve to be attacked this way. One such comment called "Our teachers, our teachers, sleazy, filthy, public school, race-baiting communist educators who are bought and paid," all this for a campaign stunt. There were also publicly racist comments interspersed, which referred to blacks, and these are also screenshotted, as criminals, pimps, drug weapon dealers, thieves, cop killers, mass murderers, and terrorists. These things are hard for me as an adult to read. Imagine the black children and children of color in our schools who are well aware of what is going on in our community, having to log online and see these comments being made. We know that the school, the school board, superintendent, you cannot control everything that happens on all corners of the internet. But we have asked, and it's in further detail in the letter that we sent, that every effort is made to protect these children from being bullied and cyberbullied and bullied at this meeting in the future. Thank you.
Last speaker on the list for tonight is Mr. Brendan Mahan.
My name is Brendan Mahan. I live at 31 Kinglet Drive. Thank all of you for having me here. I'm a little torn. I'm kind of going in a few different directions at the moment. I was asked to read the letter that the kids wrote. I was given that honor. You're doing it, so it's cool. The simple fact that I had to be asked to read that letter because the kids don't feel safe coming here and reading it is unacceptable. That's not okay. The conflict over this poem is kind of stunning to me. I understand that the poem is inaccurate. I understand that the poem is about something other than Shrewsbury. So I'm assuming that you would support taking the midnight ride of Paul Revere out of Shrewsbury's curriculum, because that's also inaccurate, and it also isn't based in Shrewsbury. It's totally the same. It's the history of the country. And so is the death of George Floyd, which is really what that poem is about. Did it go beyond that? It did. But primarily, the poem was aimed at the death of George Floyd. So I want to take a second and zoom out to that moment. George Floyd, we all know, was kneeled on for nine minutes and 29 seconds, which is over three times longer than the time I'm being given right now. It happened two months, May 25th, two months into a quarantine that was supposed to last two weeks. Our students, not just black students, the white kids too, the ones that my kids know, watched a man get murdered on the internet, and I can use the word murdered, because his killer has been convicted of murder. So that's what it is. These kids didn't watch it once. They watched it over and over and over again, because that's the nature of social media, that's the nature of kids' ability to find things on the internet. They were living through a traumatizing event of who knows how long we're going to be living in quarantine during a global pandemic. They were living through a traumatizing event of chaos in the streets about masks, and then they watched a man get murdered. And some of the kids who watched a man get murdered were black, just like that man. And one of those kids was so disturbed by that, that the trauma of witnessing that was played out in her art, and she shared a poem about that man's death. And wrapped up inside of it was not just the trauma of his death, it was the trauma that all of us have been going through in various capacities. But for her, it was that much more personal, because she looked like him, more than so many of us in this room looked like him. And she knows he was being killed because of his skin color. And that's what the poem is about. It's about the parents, it's about the parental view of the risk that a young black man has if he has an encounter with the police that goes wrong. It's not about police being bad or opposing the police. It's about a very real fear in this country.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the speakers that presented to the committee tonight. Before we close this agenda item, I do want to address the claim that we, as a board, are silencing parents' voices. I will remind everybody that this is a public meeting in a public building. All school committee meetings are broadcast live and archived through SMC and YouTube. Our email addresses are a matter of public record. Public participation is a permanent fixture in our agenda. It is available to anyone and any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. With that, I will say, you know, what's been said by every school committee chair when we, we don't have any speaking at public participation, as a reminder to all the residents, for future meetings, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of each meeting. The school committee encourages citizens of the district to watch our meetings so that they become better acquainted with the operations and programs of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Where can you get your address, your email address? I'd like to speak at the next meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's on our website at shrewsburymass.gov. Yeah, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is chairperson and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to share this week? Okay, there being none, I did mention to everyone that I would read a letter that I received today prior to the meeting from the Black History Committee, and they've asked me to read this as part of my report tonight. Dear school committee members and members of the Shrewsbury community, Black History Committee would like to address the school committee and the Shrewsbury community as a whole. As students who participated in the Black History Assembly, we feel the need to speak out regarding things being said online and at the last meeting. Seeing lies spread about the assembly invalidates all the hard work we put into it. People have reduced the assembly to one topic rather than taking the message we were trying to convey. In no way were students being indoctrinated. Students were presented the black struggles, and we share how black people have and still are rising above them. We believe these things should and need to be taught at our schools. There were no statistics shared during the assembly. No one was forced to stand for the Black National Anthem. We invited them to join us and stand. The poem was not meant to bash any police officers, certainly not the ones here in Shrewsbury. The poem was about the death of George Floyd and the lasting impact of racism and systemic injustice. Our goal was for the people to listen and understand the emotions and the message it was trying to express. Being able to hear the perspectives of others is the only way our community can grow. As students, we are concerned about the rude comments online and the lack of support from our school community. There is no way for us to make change without debate and discussion, and change certainly will not come if people are not open to topics that make them uncomfortable. Moving forward, we hope that people will recognize that Black History is American history, and it must be taught and discussed in our schools in order for change to come. We would like to invite the school committee to join us for ongoing discussions regarding Black History and how we can support our minority community. We also hope to have these conversations with the Shrewsbury community without fear of continued harassment and threats. Thank you for your time and consideration in addressing these issues. Sincerely, SHS Black History Committee members. With that, actually, colleagues, I'd like to request that we get a motion to take a quick 10-minute recess, if we could.
Sure.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Move in second, and all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
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 And meeting is in recess for 10 minutes. And meeting is in recess for 10 minutes. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you very much for holding on. So we're gonna resume our meeting right now. And we left off with the next item on our agenda, which is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank everyone at Coolidge School. I was able to attend today the Read Across America Day and read with Mr. Fairbrother's third grade class. They were outstanding. Very respectful and eager group of young people. I was happy to read the book by our local Shrewsbury Children's Author, April Jones Prince, titled Jackie Robinson: He Led the Way. And we had a great discussion as a class. So thank you to Mr. Fairbrother's class for hosting me, Mrs. Olson and the Coolidge community. I'm looking forward to a similar event at Floral Street School on Friday morning. And appreciate everyone who has come in. It's a little bit different still with not as many people coming into the schools. That's gonna be changing over time, of course. But it's wonderful to be celebrating reading in our elementary schools. I also wanted to congratulate all of our Shrewsbury High School and Oak Middle School athletics teams who are completing the winter season. Again, there were some different challenges as a result of just the differences relative to COVID protocols and whatnot. All the different events I was able to witness this year, our students were tenacious and saw them learning all the difficult, sometimes happy and sometimes difficult lessons that come with athletics. And I want to thank all of the student athletes and their families, their coaches, Mr. Kloss, the Athletic Director, and the administration at both Shrewsbury High School and Oak Middle School for supporting our athletics program this past winter season. That is Superintendent's Report this year.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Okay, great. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It's a student spotlight. Grade four student leader crews, welcome, to provide more information to the school committee and the public here regarding ways in which our students are learning and acting in ways that connect with our district's core values during the school year. We have been spotlighting various practices happening in different schools. At tonight's meeting, Shrewsbury Public Schools Elementary Student Representatives will talk about grade four student leader crews at all five elementary schools. And with us today is Principal Jane Lazzott, and we have some distinguished guests here at the table. If we could, we have some introductions.
Yes, and thank you to my colleagues, my principal colleagues in all the elementary schools, as well as assistant principals, Shelley Boy, Gina Kelly, Steph Fox, our media aide at Patton, and parents. Our students are going to introduce themselves, and they're just gonna take it away, and they'll be open to questions and comments.
Sounds good. Great.
Good evening. My name is Zuhabe Sayed, and I'm on the Floral Street School Student Council. Thank you for inviting us to your meeting tonight, so we can share about our student council crews. Student council leaders are fourth graders that work together to make our schools great places where everyone feels they belong to the community. Student councils also plan ways for the whole school to have fun and do important things to take care of our school. One important thing you should know is that this year, anyone in fourth grade can be on a student council crew. Didn't used to be that way. In the past, only two students from each fourth grade class would be elected by the students of their class to be representatives on the student council. And now, there's a place for everyone on the student council crew. I surveyed all of the students on the Floral Street School Student Council and collected their opinions about the student council. Over seventy-five percent of the students rated the quality of the student council services a five on a scale of one to five. Another twenty percent rated it a four. Here are a few comments a few of my fellow student council members have said. I think it was very fun and cool. It was fun. It'll give everyone a chance to make a poster. I think it's cool that the student council is doing this. Student council is a wonderful experience and very fun. I hope we can do equally as fun stuff this time. I think it is a good way to make friends, and it has art, which I love. I was a student leader on the Holiday Spirit Week Crew. The next crew I want to join is the Makerspace March Crew because it gives students a chance to express their creativity. And now it's time to hear from a student council leader at Spring Street School. Thank you. Lenny, you're up.
I know. I just need to get that thing pulled up. Thank you for inviting us to share this evening. Welcome to the Student Leadership Team at Spring Street School. There are five project teams you can choose from each trimester. Here are the choices. The Communications Team, the Advertising Team, the Public Relations Team, the Community Service Team, and the Research Team. The Communications Team writes up announcements, all-school meeting speeches, and Mr. Baby's link. If you like to write up things, this team's for you. But hold on, there are still a few more choices. The Advertising Team creates posters and flyers to encourage people to support the ongoing projects. Bread tags, Jared boxes, coat drive, et cetera, et cetera. If you want to show off your drawing skills, this is for you. The Public Relations Team gives pep talks to classrooms and speaks at all-school meetings. If you like to talk, this team is for you. The Community Service Team helps directly with the ongoing projects by organizing materials, delivery of them, and sorting them. If you want to help hands-on, you can trust that this team is for you. The Research Team looks for information about the projects that the Student Leadership Team is doing for the month. If you want to look up info to the rest of the team, this is for you. Now, let's hear it from Patton School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brynlee Colleen. I'm a fourth-grade student in Ms. Mullins' class at Patton School. And I am here tonight representing the fourth-grade student leadership team at Patton School. At the beginning of the school year, all fourth-grade students were invited to participate in student leadership and were given the opportunity to sign up for a student leader crew. We had a tremendous turnout. As fourth graders eagerly wanted to help Patton in the Shrewsbury community, our goal as a leadership team is to provide encouragement, compassion, inspiration, and support to students, families, and staff in any way that we can. When applying to be part of the leadership crews, one of my classmates shared, "I want to serve as a fourth-grade leader, so I can be a role model and help out around the school. I also want to be a good influence for the younger classes. I've always had older students looking out for me and a good influence, and I'd love to do it too." Another one of my classmates shared, "Because I was never at this school before, and I think being a student leader would be great for me and helpful to others." A few of the projects we have worked on this year include the February Fitness Challenge. This was an opportunity for all members of our community to practice well-being by exercising for a minimum of fifteen minutes a day outside of school hours for two weeks. We are thankful that Mr. Jordan has taught fourth graders how to be mindfulness ambassadors to younger students at Patton and across the district. They receive ongoing training in mindfulness practices with Mr. Jordan while learning public speaking and teaching skills. Other students and leadership crew leaders created an opportunity for our entire school to donate food, toiletry, gift cards, and other items to St. Anne's during the holiday time. Students created winter holiday and Valentine's Day cards for senior citizens and delivered them to the senior center. Soon, students will be collecting items for a local animal shelter, in addition to collecting recycle bins at the end of the day on Fridays, writing positive affirmations for all students, and reading to kindergarten and first-grade classes. We look forward to some exciting projects ahead, including sharing our love of reading with the community by filling our little library with wonderful books for all children and maintaining Patton's Nature Trail that was renovated over the summer by Eagle Scout Jack Newell. Thank you for your time and for your listening to what our fourth-grade leaders are up to at Patton. I would now like to welcome Pallavi, a student representative from Coolidge.
Good evening. My name is Pallavi Padala, and I'm on the Student Council at Calvin Coolidge School. Thank you for having us tonight. Every month, the students at Coolidge learn a core value from Character Strong, our character curriculum. Everyone follows core values at Coolidge. People are kind to each other. If someone is alone, people include others. This year at Coolidge, we have been working on belonging. It's important for everyone to feel like they belong at our school. Our teachers work hard to get to know their students. Our school received Colors of the World crayons, so everyone is represented when they draw themselves. In February, we celebrated Kindness Week to connect to our character strong trait, empathy. During Kindness Week, students had activities every day such as the Happy Heart Activity, compliment a friend, make a kindness poster, kindness bookmarks, and write a thanking note to a Coolidge staff member. The school scheduled a lot of fun activities, like Student Appreciation Day on Valentine's Day. The teachers met us with signs and balloons when we got to school. Everyone wore red and heart clothes. Later that day, we played Intercom Bingo, and we could participate in lunchtime karaoke if we wanted to join in. There were activities every day that week. As leaders, we acted as role models and shared kind acts. The student council has benefited me. It has taught me how to be a leader and how to work in a group with others. One of our character traits this year is cooperation. Being a student council member helps you learn to cooperate with others. It's been a positive experience. Everyone belongs at Coolidge. We have brought you Colors of the World crayons, so you can see what they are like. Now it's time to hear from the Beal School representative.
Hi, my name is Desmond Conlon. The Class X Crew would like to share what we have been working on here at Beal School. Over the month of December, our school strived to give to others a December to Remember. We collected over one thousand four hundred canned goods for those in need within our community. We decided to give our collections to St. Anne's Food Pantry here in Shrewsbury. As a school, we learned the importance of giving to others and helping those in need. We hope to pass this forward in the years to come. Now we're available to take any questions you have.
Great, thank you very much for your presentation. Colleagues, questions, comments, Ms. Fritz?
I think they're gonna give you a run for your money as an announcer. You guys are, I think, are right up there with them. Thank you for your presentations, and what's striking me about what you're saying, and I was writing down some of the words, fun, help out, good influencers, community service, core values, people are kind to each other. And I think after the week that we have had and the community has had, that that is the most important thing that you said tonight, that everybody should be kind to each other. And I get emotional saying that. I'm getting old. Everything makes me emotional. But I just think it's one of those, if we can teach kids now to do this, it'll pay off down the road. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm also just dazzled by your public speaking here. It's really remarkable. You should all consider running for school committee sometime in the future. I count five, so I think we're all set. But I also heard that you were trained in some public speaking, that you had some help with this and they worked on it. I think that's absolutely amazing. That's wonderful. How does that training go?
So on some days, Mr. Jordan, our mindfulness teacher, would come in and do mindfulness. And then throughout the week, he would come in to a class, a fourth-grade class, and he would pick three to four students from that class to go to one of the youngest students' class and have them do a breath or two and teach them how to do it.
So he worked, he worked public speaking into the breathing techniques and everything to relieve some of the tension that you might have in doing that. Isn't that interesting? That's really great. Mr. Pallas?
Just a comment. You all did a great job, and you're not only fantastic leaders for your schools, but you are all examples of leaders for adults, including us throughout this community. So great job.
Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I want to thank you so much. I thank you for the crayons. They've run out at my house, so my kids will appreciate them too. I want to thank all of your parents who are here tonight to support you, and all of the teachers and others who are here. The word that really struck with me that I heard a few of you say is the word belonging. And how important that is is one of our core values, but it's not, core values are what we write on a piece of paper and we hang up on posters. What you're doing is living it out and telling us that if you see a kid alone, you want to go and sit with them. You're not the only one who's gonna cry, but that is what, I have a poster in my house that says, "What I want for my kids is to be the kind kid." And that's what's most important to me, not the strongest or the most athletic or even the best speaker. You're a really good speaker, so. That I want them to be the kind kid. And so you're demonstrating that in your responsibility in each of your buildings as the fourth graders, as the oldest kids, as the ones that the younger kids looked up to, that's so important. So I want you to keep that with you, carry it right through to middle school. We needed it Sherwood at Oak too. And keep that, keep that going strong, because it's gonna take you really far, and I'm just incredibly proud of you.
Well, I'm super impressed as well. Thank you so much for the presentation. You know, public speaking is not an easy thing.
Good one.
Yeah, no, public speaking is definitely a tough thing. I appreciate how confident you speak and how well you you project and just, you know, make eye contact. It's just phenomenal skills that in fourth grade, I was, just to let you know, I was a sixth grader when I did my first public speech at what was Shrewsbury Middle School, and I was like so nervous. I did it about a hatpin collection. And I was, I was like, it's awful. You know, I'm thinking about you as fourth graders and what you're able to do is outstanding. So kudos to you, to your educators, and to the principals and staff for preparing you so well. And I am interested, can you explain to me Intercom Bingo? Like, how does that work?
Intercom Bingo is like, so everyone gets a bingo card and some coins, and they call out numbers over the intercom, and if you get a bingo, you tell the office. And if you win, you get a prize.
Can I play if I come to? Sounds like fun. Well, again, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the crayons as well. I was a little nervous when the crayons were being handed out because I thought you were gonna have me draw. As Mrs. Molina will attest from Beal School, she's seen my drawings. We did a virtual drawing last year. It was awful. And of course, thank you to the parents here in attendance tonight for your support of these students and for your support of our school committee. Very much appreciate that you're here. You all have very talented students, so thank you so much. You have made our month, and I'm not talking about the month of March. I'm talking about the last thirty days. This has been the highlight. So thank you so much. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you. I'm also incredibly impressed, just like all the members of the school committee. Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Thank you for the leadership you're providing to your peers. One thing I just want to highlight for those who may have caught a little bit from their presentation, but the student leadership crews essentially that are happening at the elementary level, which have been, happened at Sherwood Middle School for a long time under Dr. Lazzott's leadership, and this has now spread to the elementary school, I think is an absolutely superior model to what has just been the way we did things for a long time, which is what, you had student council, you had an election, you selected, elected one boy and one girl from a class, and they were the leaders of the school in doing things. And yet, there would be lots and lots of kids who wanted to be student council members. So the question I know Dr. Lazzott had a while ago was, why limit that? We have lots of students who want to be leaders, and one of the things that it reminds me of in our Shrewsbury Portrait of a Graduate, which is our vision for all of our students, for by the time they start with us in preschool, all the way through when they graduate from Shrewsbury High School, is one of the six areas what we say is most important to us is leadership. And I know that when the Portrait of a Graduate Study Group that Dr. McGee was part of, many teachers and parents from here in Shrewsbury, the debate was, well, is that a lot of pressure to put on all kids? Have to be a leader? But I think that the Portrait of a Graduate Study Group was very wise, because what they decided was that leadership doesn't have to do with whether you're elected to a position, you're the student council member or the class president or the captain of the athletic team. Leadership is what you do. And leadership is anything you do to influence someone else being successful. And what I heard all five of you students talking to us about was how you and all of your classmates and schoolmates, and in fourth grade in particular in elementary schools, who are part of these student leadership crews, are influencing other kids in your school and making your school a better place. That's leadership. You didn't have to be elected to become a leader. All of us can be a leader anytime we help someone become successful, and I'm super proud that you're doing that. So congratulations, and thank you to your principals, the staff, to Dr. Lazzott. So, congratulations, uh, and, and thank you to your principals, the staff, um, to Dr. Lozot, and, uh, again, we really appreciate, uh, and please give our thanks to your fellow, uh, crew members, uh, back in the schools, and I look forward to hopefully connecting with them as we get to, out to the schools more in, in the springtime. Um, so with that, we do have something special for you, and I think because we are, you know, adapting here and, and things are changing, um, we would love to have you come around and, and either fist bump or shake the hand of, of the school committee members, and I have a, a certificate for each of you. Um, so why don't you come on up and, uh, we will congratulate you. And how about a round of applause?
Great job.
Very proud of you. You did a fabulous job.
All right, I think you're gonna get a quick photo op here, Mr. Wensky. Maybe if the students, Ms. McGee, if you could help us get the students up here just to take a picture with.
Honey, move over, okay? Move over, dear.
This is very professional.
Oh, thank you so much.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for being. Yeah, it's still on. Dr. Sawyer's gonna share some slides. All right, yeah, thank you all. Um, certainly all welcome to stay, but we won't be offended if you decide to leave. Uh, so, uh, up to you, uh, but thank you all for presenting tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is uh, the district response to the pandemic. It's a report, uh, and I'll hand it back over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Bring up my slides here. All right, thank you, Mr. Wensky. Just want to again begin, uh, reiterating what our primary goal has been this year, which is to provide full-time in-school learning for our students, uh, with the minimal amount of disruptions while using a variety of mitigation strategies to, to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19 at school. Uh, our approach has been threefold, uh, the aforementioned mitigation strategies to reduce risk of transmission, also to create a sense of belonging and to support students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, and to provide learning opportunities that support students' academic needs. Um, this is another good news story this evening. Uh, the positivity rate, uh, for Massachusetts, uh, according to Johns Hopkins on their seven-day measure, is down to one point five six. That's about as low as we've seen it in a long, long time. Um, it's the second lowest in the United States as a matter of fact, uh, so that's good news for us here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, in terms of how that has looked over time, uh, we saw the Omicron surge happen in December. Uh, we went for, it had been creeping up to just over that five percent threshold, spiked, uh, in early January, and now has dropped precipitously, uh, to, uh, below two percent, uh, as it stands now in early March. This is the graph that is shared by the state relative to cases by age group. Um, and you can see in the text at the bottom that in the, uh, age zero to nine age group, uh, that was about twenty-eight hundred, uh, this, or was, uh, and that's eighty-five hundred compared to eighty-five hundred the last report. Uh, similarly, ages ten to nineteen cut by about in half. Um, you can see ages, uh, uh, you can see there that, that again, being reduced, uh, by about half over this, uh, last two-week period. This is the hospital admission rates. Uh, this is again a per one hundred thousand statistic. Um, and so, uh, compared to what it was, uh, the last report in February tenth the state had released, that was, uh, seven students per hundred thousand in age zero to eleven, uh, were hospitalized. That's been reduced to three point seven. Uh, it's gone from four point four to two point eight in the age twelve to seventeen bracket in eighteen and nineteen-year-olds. It's gone from six to three point five. So again, extremely rare, uh, that there's a hospitalization, uh, of a young person in Massachusetts due to COVID-19. Locally, you can see that the case numbers are coming down overall for the town of Shrewsbury. Uh, the last week they reported, it was down to a total number of thirty-one cases. Of those, four were Shrewsbury Public Schools students. Uh, this year we've had nine, uh, start this year, this week, uh, so far we've had nine in the state, uh, uh, the town rather, report will come out on Friday. Um, again, it's a fraction of one percent, uh, of students, uh, or, or individuals. Uh, in this case, students who have tested positive. Um, so, uh, you know, over ninety-nine percent of our students, uh, are, are not test positive for COVID over the last couple of weeks. Um, the fourteen A positivity rate, a little higher of course, because it's trending downwards, but again, well below the five percent benchmark now for Shrewsbury specifically. Um, and that's for the, through February nineteenth, uh, published by the state. As far as our case count, excuse me, there were, uh, eleven or have been eleven cases this week through one-thirty PM today, when we, uh, cut it off to, to create the, the data. There, four of those students or individuals were in there in school during the infectious period. Uh, that brings us to the total of, uh, one thousand eight hundred thirty-four cases total for this school year. Uh, about eleven hundred plus of them were in school during their infectious period. Uh, and, uh, cases tied to probable or possible exposure in school is at a hundred. Uh, but just a reminder that we've stopped measuring that with the Omicron surge and the shift in our testing and, uh, strategic approach to, uh, mitigating uh, COVID. Uh, we presume that there can be some in-school transmission, again, because our numbers are very, very low right now. And frankly, a number of those are traced back to family situations. The ones that have been popping up this week since vacation were happening from travel outside, uh, vacation, but again, a very low number. This slide demonstrates the number of cases percentage-wise around vaccinated versus unvaccinated individuals among students. Uh, over time, about fifty percent of the cases have been in vac- vaccinated students, thirty-four unvaccinated students, fifteen percent in students who at the time were not eligible for vaccination, and a very small percentage where that was unknown. Uh, for staff, uh, of course, the vast, vast majority of our staff are vaccinated, ninety-one percent vaccinated, seven percent unvaccinated, uh, and only a small number unknown. Uh, looking at that in a slightly different way, you can see, uh, students who tested positive out of the total of vaccinated students in grade seven and twelve who have been vaccinated all throughout the year. Uh, and then unvaccinated students, you can see that thirty-four percent of those students, uh, have contracted COVID, whereas about nineteen percent uh, of those who are vaccinated. Uh, for staff, of the eleven hundred-plus staff who are vaccinated, uh, twenty percent of them have contracted COVID, so-called breakthrough case this year. And of our forty-four, uh, staff total over the course of the year, some that are not necessarily here at this point, uh, thirty-four of them saw, seventy-seven percent of our staff who were not vaccinated, uh, had contracted COVID. Just a reminder that we publish our dashboard every Monday. Um, and this is just a screenshot of what you can see there, along with a graph of the cases for the last four weeks. Uh, last week, we had five cases reported. Of course, again, just to remind people that, uh, there has been a, a real shift, of course, in people, many more people using rapid tests to determine. Um, and there certainly is the possibility that there were some cases that happened over the course of February vacation, uh, where someone might have tested positive at home on a rapid test, uh, and for whatever reason chose not to report it to the schools. Uh, these, uh, numbers are either ones that were reported to us or because they were a PCR test, which automatically shows up in the state testing system, uh, known as Maven, uh, where we can see those, uh, our nurse director can, uh, see those cases. This is just a graph showing the day-by-day number of cases that we documented. You can see the, the huge spike in, uh, over November into December and January, and then precipitously coming down up through, uh, end of January and February to now in March. This shows it on a weekly basis. Again, just getting a sense of school by school, the distribution, which tracks fairly similarly to the size of the school. This is by grade, and again, over time, we've seen more cases happening in those upper elementary and early middle school grades. Just a visual of students' cases versus staff cases. And this is the vaccination data reported by the state. The last, the report we have from them is February twenty-second, where you can see that of our age five to eleven student, uh, or, uh, children in town of Shrewsbury, uh, seventy-two percent have at least one dose, sixty percent are considered fully vaccinated. Of our twelve to fifteen-year-olds, uh, ninety-three percent fully vaccinated and thirty percent who have received a booster. Uh, and our sixteen to nineteen-year-olds, uh, also ninety-three percent fully vaccinated and over half have received a booster. This, if people are looking at the slides, which are always posted the next day on our website, just a comparison of some local, uh, bordering communities. Uh, the, the differentiation hasn't changed a whole lot since I last reported. Uh, this is just an update again on our testing program. Uh, if someone does have COVID-like symptoms, uh, they can use our centralized testing site on Maple Avenue, uh, where they can get a rapid antigen test. They have to get, has to be approved by the school nurse ahead of time, which is typically not an issue. Um, and sign a consent form, and then, uh, since that time, we started this in mid-January, we've tested a hundred and eighty-one individuals who were symptomatic, and of them, twenty-seven percent were positive. Our routine safety testing, uh, formerly known as surveillance or pooled testing, um, we now have about seventy percent of students and staff participating, that's down from about twenty-five percent. Uh, we believe this is because of the significant shift to people opting into the surveillance, uh, rapid testing program. People aren't necessarily choosing to do both. Uh, over the course of the year, we've processed twenty-nine thousand samples, and we've had a one percent positivity rate, about three hundred and ten. Um, a couple of the cases that we documented for this week earlier in the slide deck, uh, were actually out of our pooled testing this week. And then there's the at-home antigen rapid testing, uh, which was announced in January. Uh, staff and families have to opt in, opt in. It's a separate consent. Um, it's intended again as a weekly surveillance. Uh, and we have about six hundred and forty-five of our staff and nine hun- one thousand nine hundred thirty students participating. Uh, the positive results, the people who participate, uh, pledge that they'll po- report those to the school nurse. Uh, from this, so far, we've only had one positive test. Uh, but again, we've seen that the numbers have gone down drastically. As far as student absences, uh, we're in a much better place than where we were, uh, down to three percent absent rate today as of today, March second. That's just a graphical representation of what things have looked like through the end of February. And then for staff absences, again, uh, much reduced, uh, after the Omicron surge has passed, uh, down to three percent as of, uh, uh, returning from break. And the proportion, uh, right now, we only, this week have only had one staff member at, 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 when this slide was created, who had, was out uh, on February twenty-eighth, coming back from vacation, uh, due to COVID. And then again, it's a graphical representation of the proportion of in-the-red staff with COVID over total staff absences. This was data the school committee wanted to, uh, see, uh, prior at your last meeting prior to the February break. This is last school year, so two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, where you could see the increases after Thanksgiving uh, in winter vacation, uh, in a little bit different in February and April as the cases were abating at that time. Uh, for this year, uh, you know, we did have an increase after Thanksgiving. We had a s- very significant increase after the December vacation. Uh, this year, we actually had a reduction in February, uh, in terms of cases, uh, twenty-three compared to eleven. Um, and we'll monitor for two weeks after. That'll be next week. So again, our primary goal, uh, is to, uh, provide that in-school learning. We've been successful at doing that. Uh, it, we have very hopeful data, uh, that we're seeing, and, uh, again, we're very pleased, uh, that we did not see, uh, any, uh, significant increase, uh, and that case numbers act overall have continued to drop, um, as the Omicron surge has passed. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the committee has.
Great, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much for the report. As I've said many times, I feel it's a public service, uh, that we provide, uh, to kinda gauge where we're at, uh, in the pandemic in Shrewsbury. So, thank you so much. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is Under Policy. Uh, it is a discussion and vote regarding the COVID-19 mitigation and mask mandate, and just for background for everybody here in the room and at home, uh, on February sixteenth, the committee engaged in a discussion of mask mandates in the context of recent changes at the state level and relative to a decision by the Shrewsbury Board of Health to defer taking action on their extent, uh, extent mask mandate for schools until the Board of Health meeting on March fourth. Uh, based on the information, uh, to be presented, Dr. Sawyer would recommend, uh, the school committee vote to rescind its mask mandate effective immediately and require the superintendent of schools to follow guidelines regarding the possibility of any potential future implementation of a mask requirement. A memo was enclosed, uh, and I will, uh, hand it back over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Wensky. Uh, I'll just summarize the memo, uh, for those who are watching, and, uh, be happy to take any questions regarding my recommendation. Uh, but just to remind everyone that our school district, over the course of the school year, has been operating under five separate, different mask mandates. Uh, one, uh, was from, not necessarily in the order they were, uh, created, but one was from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Uh, that was lifted effective February twenty-eighth, uh, and so there was no longer that mandate in effect. Uh, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association had one in place for interscholastic athletics. That also was lifted effective February twenty-eighth. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, uh, had a mandate, uh, that was applied to, uh, federal transportation that included, uh, school buses and vans, uh, for public and private schools. Uh, that has been rescinded effective February twenty-fifth. Uh, and then there is, uh, the Shrewsbury Board of Health's mask mandate, which they implemented in October, I believe, um, that for the, uh, inside all public and private schools in Shrewsbury and on any school transportation, uh, within Shrewsbury. That remains in effect, and the Shrewsbury Board of Health is scheduled to meet on Friday morning, uh, to potentially take action, uh, on, uh, its mask mandate. The fifth is the school committee's own mask mandate that you implemented in August, uh, as part of the return-to-school uh, plan, uh, around protocols and, and mitigation, uh, around COVID-19. Since we last spoke, the CDC has updated its guidance regarding masking in schools. I provided a link in the memo, uh, regarding that, essentially recommending that masking be optional unless the school is in an area that is deemed by the CDC's statistics as high risk uh, for serious illness, uh, or strained healthcare resources. Uh, right now, all counties in Massachusetts are either low risk or medium risk. Um, so per the CDC's guidelines, including Worcester County, was, is, the last they reported was medium risk, uh, that people who have health concerns, uh, may wish to consult with their doctor and consider masking, uh, but that, uh, it is, uh, considered to be a recommendation for optional masking, uh, in our part of the state, according to the CDC's new guidance. Uh, you, of course, at your last meeting conveyed your preference to wait until after February school vacation to see if we did have any increase, uh, in the cases, uh, is cuz it has been an unpredictable situation, and the last couple of vacations, that did happen. Uh, just reported that that, uh, was not the case, as, and mentioned again in the memo, uh, that there were five cases reported, uh, over the course of the vacation week. And so far, uh, this week, we're a little up to eleven now, I think, but at the time I wrote the memo, we had seven cases reported. And of course, that, that's with a significant, uh, about a, a fifth, uh, or so of our, our, uh, folks, or maybe more than that, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the, uh, about half of our staff and about, uh, a, maybe about a quarter of our students participating in the rapid test piece. So, we, we would expect with over twelve hundred or, or over a thousand students participating in about, uh, five hundred staff, six hundred staff, um, if there were a surge happening, we would be detecting that in the number of, of positive rapid tests we're getting. We did not see that. So combined with this very low case rate, uh, the other improved, uh, state and local metrics, uh, some of which I just referenced in the previous report, uh, such as cases, hospitalizations, uh, also death positivity rates. Uh, also, which I didn't mention last report, the, there's been, uh, you know, greater focus on wastewater measures, uh, and those in Massachusetts are very, very low at this time. Um, combined with a relatively high level of vaccination within our community, um, all of these together, uh, signal that optional masking uh, seems highly unlikely to create a significant risk of COVID-19 transmission, uh, within our schools. Uh, I do certainly wanna mention that we know that this is not without risk. Um, there is always a level of risk around communicable disease. Uh, and we don't know exactly, of course, how, uh, things will go when it comes to, uh, you know, whether it's COVID or anything else in terms of, in terms of spread. Uh, we rely on the overall statistics and the guidance and, uh, uh, input of medical experts and public health experts. We rely on the overall statistics and the guidance and input of medical experts and public health experts. But we certainly recognize, and I know the school committee has heard from individual families where someone may be immunocompromised, where they feel that a level of risk is of concern to them. However, as we've talked about all throughout the pandemic, we are looking at balancing different kinds of risks. There certainly is a high degree of sentiment and a level even among some medical experts and educational experts that, you know, that masking is not necessary, given the prevalence of the disease, that students, in many cases, may be better off without them. And moving to an optional level is something that is supported generally across the country now by public health and medical experts. So given the data that we have, my recommendation is that the school committee vote this evening to rescind its mask mandate, so that wearing masks becomes optional within any Shrewsbury Public Schools facility or indoor setting, effective immediately. With the caveat, of course, that the other mask mandate from the Board of Health is still in effect. So even if you take action this evening, then nothing will change until the Board of Health takes that action, because the Board of Health's policy supersedes all others when it comes to these kinds of public health issues. Further, I just want to mention that if you do vote this evening to do that, there are some situations where masking will still be required due to other types of mandates. One is that there's still a CDC mandate around healthcare locations and settings, and that does include public school nurses' offices. So our nurses' offices would still require those who visit our nurses' offices to mask while they're there. Secondly, there is right now the rules for those who do test positive for COVID-19 in terms of their isolation protocol and returning out of isolation. It's five days of isolation, followed by five days where if they're asymptomatic, they can come out of isolation, attend school, attend work, whatever, but with, with masking. So someone who does test positive in our school community, if they return after the five-day isolation, they would have to mask for the next five days, days six through 10. And there's a link to that guidance in your memo as well. And then finally, if any of our students are participating in, whether that's interscholastic athletics, speech and debate, robotics, whatever the case may be, in another school district or location where that community or that school district continues to have a mask mandate, they'll be subject to that, you know, the, whatever the location is what the policy that would control that. I don't think there will be many left that are requiring it, but that is something to note as well. So with that, I do recommend that you rescind the mandate. At the last meeting, you asked me to consider what, under what conditions would we consider looking at what might require a return to a masking situation in our schools. I think that in what you have in your memo are some suggestions for guidelines for the superintendent of schools to follow. That would include monitoring ongoing communications from state and local departments of public health, from the CDC, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, around any threats to the health and safety of our school community, whether that's from COVID-19 or any other contagious disease. It also would require me to monitor student attendance on a weekly basis. And if it drops below an average of 92% over a 10-day period, that would trigger a consultation with the school district physician, director of nursing, public and medical health, medical and public health personnel from Worcester Department of Public Health, who are, is our public health department associated with the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance, of which Shrewsbury is a member, regarding any potential causes for that absenteeism. That consultation, of course, could occur before that if we notice something happening quickly or we're getting signals or information that there's something happening with some sort of contagious disease, like what's happened with H1N1 a number of years ago and obviously over the past couple of years. And then finally, if after reviewing that data and consulting, if it seems like there are concerns or there, if there's some sort of unforeseen circumstance that warrants concern around an illness potentially being transmitted in the school setting, that I would be empowered to implement a temporary masking requirement until such time as the school committee could meet and convene and decide whether or not to institute a policy with a vote regarding masking. If that were the case, I would, of course, be consulting further with all of the medical and public health officials regarding what recommendation to make, and I would be notifying the local Shrewsbury Board of Health and the town manager regarding what we're experiencing. So that would provide sort of the flexibility for us to act more quickly than, you know, whether it was the CDC or Mass Department of Public Health or Department of Education, our own local Board of Health, if we deem that to be a wise thing to do. But, you know, hopefully that won't be the case. But again, we don't know how this will, different variants may behave in the future. Our hope is that moving to optional masking will be something that will be sustained over time. And the final piece before opening to questions and comments is that it's going to be extremely important that if and when masking becomes optional for students and staff in our schools, that our district and our school leaders convey that everyone is expected to respect the choices that are made by each individual regarding whether to wear a mask at school. No one should be made to feel uncomfortable for following their preference or in the case of students, their parents' expectations regarding masking. And that's on both sides of that coin. Anyone who chooses to continue to wear a mask should be respected for that choice. And if it's truly optional, no one should be made to feel that it's not okay if they're choosing not to, if it's been made optional via your policy. And that's something that the leadership team will, will work hard to make sure we're conveying. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions and hear any comments from the committee. But again, recommending tonight, two separate votes. One to, yeah, well, to vote to take action and rescind the mask mandate to make it optional, except where mandated by another authority, and then take the separate vote regarding the guidelines in terms of, that I would adhere to around monitoring and considering any potential need for a future implementation.
Any questions and comments, Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I have two questions, Dr. Sawyer, and then a, then a comment. The, the decision you're proposing for us this evening, can you talk about how, if at all, it impacts the district's ongoing reporting of casing or ongoing testing protocols, and if they are in any way connected? Or if we'll be keeping all of those in place, whether it be opting in for pool and surveillance testing or any of the at-home antigen testing that is being distributed to students?
Yeah, there'd be no change to the testing program at this time. The testing program is in conjunction with the state. The state funds it. My understanding is that the state has it in place through April. Or maybe through the April vacation, they're going to continue to look at its efficacy. And our intention is to continue to participate as long as the state is. If there's some, some time we feel it's not necessary, but that is a state-run program that we're able to participate in. And there's no change to that at this time. And as far as our reporting and the weekly dashboard, those are all things that we'll continue to report.
Thank you. I, I think as much transparency as we can continue to provide for the community, it's important that we, we keep doing that as a, as a district. And I guess I would say, I know in my family and from the people that I talk to that we are all exhausted with this pandemic and that the comments you concluded with Dr. Sawyer are most important to me, that we continue to have supportive environments for any child or staff member who either requires to for their own reason or desires to, to wear a mask. None of us were elected here because we are public health experts. I certainly am not. And when I go back to the moment in time when we voted in a mask mandate, we did that in the context of state action that was not forthcoming and buildings that we were trying to open and get students and staff into as safely as we possibly could. So we, we acted without that guidance. At this point in time, our local Board of Health has stepped into this space and that I believe that they are using science to guide their decision-making, and that is what I am, I am looking for. I'm not saying that I, I am supportive of your recommendations, Dr. Sawyer, tonight, but that's not that I don't foresee challenges for some students and for some families, and a lot of anxiety as well, well-founded for many families with very particular circumstances. And for me, what I would ask is that our schools and both classroom leaders and parents assist our youth with as much grace as we can find in this community, because I know it's still here during this time where we're collectively moving from a pandemic to an endemic situation, knowing that there are all these different individual needs. So I support putting the, putting this decision sort of back to the Board of Public Health, which in my mind is what we are doing by removing the school committee-imposed mask mandate. So I, I support your, your proposal before us this evening. Thank you.
Since the last time we met, we've already had a CDC update. In that one week or two weeks, whatever it was that we met. And I think it's one of those things we keep watching to make sure that we're staying on top of the science, what the CDC is saying, what guidelines are being put out there for the public. And as a school committee members, we don't make a decision based on our own personal feelings. We make decisions based on what's best for the community. And I do support Dr. Sawyer's removal of the mask mandate pending the Board of Health meeting on Friday. And I do want to echo what Ms. Heffernan just said and Dr. Sawyer said. We all have to be mindful of anybody who wants to wear a mask or who doesn't want to wear a mask, for whatever reason that is, those people have a right to do that, and that option should be available for as long as they want to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Tewensky. I want to thank the superintendent for the care and thought he put into this recommendation. I want to start by echoing comments from Ms. Heffernan and Mrs. Fritz about the charged nature of this and the importance of making sure that students' emotional needs are met and supported. The question of masking in the pandemic is a source of anxiety for students from a variety of angles. And I would ask all adults in our community, including our staff, to be mindful of what students are experiencing and to do whatever they can to help make them feel secure and safe. I am glad that this committee had waited, given our history of seeing spikes in cases after vacations. Having said that, I'm also glad that we did not see a spike in cases after February break. And in that spirit, I support the recommendation that the superintendent has made before us tonight. I would ask of the superintendent, and I'm sure he's already on top of this, but I would say the need for quick and very explicit communication with parents and families around this decision is essential because obviously, this committee's decision to rescind our mandate, but the Board of Health's mandate still being in effect, could be a serious source of confusion. Obviously, I think, you know, we've done a great job communicating so far about the different mandates in place. But, you know, we, we all know how, how word spreads. Word could go forth tonight. We made a decision, and it's important that there be clear communication with the public about what is still in force and effect from the Board of Health. So I would just highlight for the superintendent the need to make sure we're quickly and very clearly communicating with families in the parent community what's going on. But having said that, I do support the recommendation before us tonight.
So I agree with my colleagues. I support the recommendation to lift the mask mandate. I also support the fact that there are going to be some people who are, for whom it is more appropriate for them to continue to wear masks, and, and I think that that's a very reasonable thing as well. I think there's another piece here that was brought up that I think is very important and I also strongly support, and that is the notion that we're developing a metric that we can continue to follow so that we know when to raise the flag and say there might be an issue that we have to look at, at taking some measure, whether it's using masks again or something else. So that part of the recommendation, I think, is very important as well. I think the schools are, are different from other organizations or public facilities. We mandate the presence of what amounts to 20% of the town's population in closed quarters all day for five days a week. And, and so the fact that we are committing ourselves to continue to monitor their well-being by looking at the absence rate, which I think is, is a very functional way of going about doing it, is, is an advance. And I think that one of the temptations, as we get to the other side of this pandemic, is to just put it behind us and to, to all those unpleasant trees that we've been dealing with over the past few years, just say, you know, enough. But to be able to actually improve public health by putting in place a monitoring system, building a bridge between the school system and our Board of Health, I, I think is a innovative and very important thing for us to do, and I strongly support that.
Thank you. I'm aligned with my colleagues as well. I do support the recommendations. I think our primary focus throughout this has always been the health, safety, and well-being of our students, our staff, and our school community. We've done that through making data-driven decisions. As Ms. Heffernan said, we're not medical professionals. We need to follow the data and the science behind this. We certainly wanted to proceed with caution, you know, coming out of the school vacation week. I know for myself, I didn't feel it was wise to lift the mask mandate as the state had requested back or recommended back on the 28th. I felt we needed a little more time to understand the data, especially after you come out of a few other vacation weeks recently where you saw an 86% surge in cases, and we have not seen that. So I do agree as well with my colleagues, and it's important to respect our students and staff that they would like to continue wearing masks. If they feel comfortable doing so, that should be something that they are made comfortable with, because everybody has a different comfort level with this. So with that, Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
No, I appreciate the comments, and again, I appreciate the feedback, and we'll do our best to communicate very clearly about this decision. And then depending on what happens on Friday with the Board of Health, if they lift it, I would imagine it will be effective on Monday. And we'll communicate very clearly on, on Friday, as well as through the typical Sunday principal bulletins as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues. This will require two separate votes. I'll take the first one. I need a motion that the committee vote to rescind its mask mandate so that wearing masks is optional within any Shrewsbury Public Schools facility or indoor setting, except where mandated by another authority, effective immediately.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. The next vote, I need a motion that the school committee vote to require the superintendent of schools to adhere to the guidelines regarding the monitoring of conditions that could affect the health and safety of the school community in order to consider any potential future implementation of a mask requirement as detailed in the enclosed memo.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is under policy. It will be a discussion regarding policy 551, the right to study controversial issues. Background for those of you that are in the audience and those who are watching at home. School Committee Policy 551, right to study controversial issues, outlines the rights students have within the Shrewsbury Public Schools to study relevant issues and express their opinions regarding them in an atmosphere free from bias and prejudice. At tonight's meeting, Dr. Sawyer and the Shrewsbury High School principal, Mr. Todd Buzidlow, will provide information regarding the recent controversy surrounding the Black History Committee Assembly in honor of Black History Month in the context of this policy. And the policy was enclosed, and it is available online for those that want to read it, as well in our packet for tonight's meeting. So with that, I will hand it back over to Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Buzidlow.
Great. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tewensky. Let me begin by just sharing the initial part of the policy, which has been in place since 1980. That's been, good reason, it's been in place since 1980 in this forum. That teachers, and by that, of course, we mean educators in all different roles, are responsible for encouraging students to search after truth and think for themselves, and that students have four basic rights with reference to the study of controversial issues in the classroom. And I think that the school committee in 1980 and school committees since then, who have maintained this policy, make a very strong statement when they talk about a right that a student has in school. This is an important topic for us to, to discuss this evening because of not only the current environment in American society, in schools across the nation, but also especially because of the recent controversy that we've experienced here in Shrewsbury over the Black History Committee's Assembly in honor of Black History Month. Two weeks ago, at school committee meeting, a member of the public, congressional candidate, parent in the district, made a charge that we are indoctrinating our students. And I think it's important for the community. I know there's been a lot of, of interaction on social media in particular, I understand, and certainly some emails that we've received, the school committees received. And I think it's important that we, as a school administration, provide some clear information about how we teach students about controversial topics. This represents how we approach, again, this teaching. And it is something that Mr. Buzidlow and I will try to frame, some of the issues that are happening at the high school, some of our responses to those issues, and the response to this particular controversy through the lens of this particular policy. The next element of it, of the four rights students have, is the right to study controversial issues which have political, economic, or social significance on which they, at their level, they should begin. level, they should begin, which at their level, they should begin to form judgments. We're trying to develop judgment in our students. And obviously, what we do with high school students is going to be very different from the elementary students who were here earlier this evening. But with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bizidlo to talk a little bit in general, some of the controversial issues and topics that students have been studying at Shrewsbury High School for a very long time. So with that, I'll ask him to speak.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. And I agree with your sentiment. In terms of the intellectual growth of students in the four years they're attending high school is immense. What students study in ninth grade and what they're studying in 12th grade, and you've seen some of the work that students have done relative to science fair projects and their national accolades, the growth is incredible during this time period of adolescence life. Some of the topics, though, in terms of what we study here at the high school, generally speaking, in our science classes in particular, I think of one course, Bioethics, where we study a number of issues ranging from abortion to euthanasia. People have all different opinions about it. What we do is try and provide a fair, unbiased opinion about that, or rather, facts about that, and help people work through some of the nuances of those things. In terms of our, in terms of political current events, and events in history, we study those in our social science courses. And most recently, what has kind of captivated the audience at the high school this past weekend, world news is Ukraine, and the parallels that we've seen with World War I and the war in Europe, and how those things can spiral out of control. And there's generally a general fear and anxiety, I feel, from students regarding Ukraine and potentially spiraling out of control. So trying to make those parallels and understand the ramifications of war and what happens, and the policies behind some of the countries that are involved are really important. Additionally, in literature and in our humanities, particularly English, we study people's struggles. We struggle, we study their humanity and their inhumanity, ranging from Shakespeare to Orwell to more recent contemporary authors. So some of these challenges that people face, we try and parallel and make sense of meaning of our own lives through the things we study through, particularly in literature. So we do our best, I think, and teachers do their best, to share what is really relevant and contextual in our lives and what people and adolescents are seeing. And as we know and have experienced over the past week or two, but even in the last five to 10 to 15 years, or 10 years, is the amount of social media influence that has permeated adolescents' lives. And some of that is equivalent to the toxic stress they see by the constant feed and the constant pinging and chirping, and trying to, you know, discern, and we'll talk a little bit about what we do with how do we help kids understand and learn how to discern information when consuming social media. But I think a challenge, and it came up earlier in this meeting, was the just sheer volume of information that's presented to people in our community, whether it's students or adults, and then going through all that information, trying to figure that out. Our teachers struggle with this as well, because they're constantly trying to have people understand and make sense of what they're seeing online, and some of the things that people say online are just flat out not true. And that's some of the challenges our educators are facing here.
So the next piece in the policy is that our students have the right to study under competent instruction in an atmosphere free from bias and from prejudice. Every year, we remind our staff that it is incumbent upon all of us who are in a public school environment to be politically neutral. We also, and our educators strive, and I think very successfully, to work with our students in presenting controversial issues and other topics in a way that it provides a balanced perspective, in a way that does not try to influence them based on what their own personal preference may happen to be. And of course, with a staff of all in, over 1,000 people, there's a wide range of personal perspectives, as you might imagine. But providing multiple sources, different angles on different issues to help students see the multiple sides of an issue that we teach them is really critically important, again, in an age-appropriate way, as we address different topics of different levels of complexity. There's no doubt right now that the environment nationally, and now unfortunately, to a degree locally, is chilling to educators, in that people are making claims, in many cases unfounded claims, that somehow educators are quote-unquote indoctrinating children, makes educators frankly worried about how what they might say or do or present might be taken out of context. And that's something that we're going to have to continue to find ways to support our educators with. I am grateful that we're in Massachusetts, where a new law was just signed into law by Governor Baker that requires school districts to teach about genocide, in contrasting that with laws that have been proposed in other states and other parts of the nation that are actually proposed, to say that teachers cannot teach controversial topics, or cannot speak about them, or cannot do things that might quote-unquote make students feel some kind of discomfort, when there is a large degree of discomfort in a variety of things in our history, as well as current events. Ukraine just being just one of them, as Mr. Bizidlo mentioned. So that's something that is of concern, and I think it's important to note. I think it's important to provide some factual context to claims that were made recently about our school district, where the congressional candidate and parent who presented two weeks ago indicated that, waved some documents and said that this was evidence that our curriculum was indoctrinating students. I followed up with the gentleman and asked for specifics so we could look into this. Ultimately provided me with a digital copy of an assignment. I asked for more context as to where it had come from, what class, what school, that he did not receive any answer to that. However, it did seem like a high school-level assignment, and I was able to give it to Mr. Bizidlo, who actually, turns out, had been made aware of it by a parent recently at about the same time. It was about something that had happened last spring, and I'll have Mr. Bizidlo speak to that a little bit more in a moment specifically. But, you know, the assignment, you know, I want to be clear, it asks students for their opinion, and I think that's an important element when we're talking, when we're trying to have students form their own judgments. But I'll ask Mr. Bizidlo to spark a little bit more specifically, because the way, ironically, there's a process that we have in place as a school district that really worked in this case. So I'll ask Bizidlo to spend just a little time talking about that specifically.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. And I think when you talk about the process, and I think for anyone that's attended an event here, or rather, at the high school, one of the things we talk about is when people are dissatisfied or unhappy with what happens, we work through a process, because typically those issues can be resolved before they get to my desk. And we review this with families when they enter in. If students aren't happy with what's happening with a teacher, we ask the teacher to meet with the student, have, try and have some conversation with this, with the guidance council, or the director, or an assistant principal. In cases around curricular issues, parents will reach out to teachers and ask about those things. If they're not satisfied, then they can reach out to the director, then they can escalate to the assistant principal, and finally reach my desk in terms of what happens. In this case, the parent reached out directly to the teacher and shared their sentiment that the assignment was somehow biased, or they believed it was biased or more one-sided. The assignment was relevant in terms of what was happening as a society at the time, and still relevant, in my opinion. It was politically relevant around the controversial topic of Black Lives Matters, Blue Lives Matters, and All Lives Matters, and those contexts of what people were seeing on social media. The teacher asked people to read a scholarly article from a professor of political science at the University of Sydney in Australia, and then respond to his commentary on that in their own opinion with short writing prompt. And then they did small discussion groups with their peers. That work wasn't graded. It was to facilitate discussion, help people understand and think about an intellectual paper that was written by a professor from a different university, a university out of our country. The parent emailed the teacher, expressing their concern around it. The teacher then met with the director to talk about what the assignment, generally speaking, they looked at it and could understand the perspective of how this might seem one-sided or a bit biased. So the teacher reached back, circled back to the family, and basically said that they understood that point of view, and upon further reflection, they weren't going to use that assignment moving forward. And it was resolved. It didn't reach any, didn't reach the director level, it didn't reach assistant principal level, it didn't reach my level. So the process works, and I think when people have issues or take exception to what happens with what they're hearing, I, you know, I encourage people to reach out to teachers to find out exactly what happened in the classroom. I think that's important to know. As a, as a parent of two teenage, or a teenage, a teenager in high school and a college-age student, I often would not get all the information that happened within my son's classes. And there were often times where I did have to reach out to my son's teachers to find out, given more context of what was happening in their classrooms. And that's okay to do. So I think if people do have concerns, that's one avenue that they can pursue, certainly have conversations with their students, but also reach out to the school to get to the root of the problem or root of the issue that they see.
So I think I would just add that, in looking at the document, there was also a political cartoon, which I think was referenced in the public comments a couple of weeks ago, about this idea of the different hashtags or All Lives Matter. And again, just want to reiterate, it was something presenting a point of view around a controversial topic, which is our students' right to study, and students were asked to share their opinions on it. It wasn't presented in a way saying this is, this part is right or this part is wrong. Students were supposed to digest it, talk about it, and then come to their own conclusion. And I certainly give the teacher credit for saying that, you know, if perhaps it was being perceived that it was trying to push a particular point of view, that they would do something different the next time. That's how reasonable adults work out differences of opinion or potential concerns. I would reiterate, Mr. Bizidlo said, you know, certainly we're committed to communication with families to resolve issues. We trust our teachers to do that, and we certainly have other options if something can't be worked out at the teacher level. I share the same perspective, of course, at the dinner table when you ask someone what they did in school and the answer is nothing. And, you know, that's obviously very disturbing if you're the superintendent of schools and your child goes to those schools, so they didn't do anything in school that day, but they just really don't want to talk about it at that point, and that's understandable. There's also context. I was thinking back to my own high school education, and Mr. Foley, who was my, I think, junior or senior, my senior-year social sciences teacher, and as a matter of habit, he would have us read once a week an essay, back when there were magazines. It was Newsweek magazine. And if you read Newsweek magazine, back in ancient times when I was in high school in the mid-1980s, one week there would be a column in the back of the magazine by George F. Will, who was, was and remains a very widely-known conservative political commentator. And the next week, it would be a column by Anna Quinlan, who was a widely-known commentator more from the liberal side of the political perspective. And they would alternate weeks. If I happened to come home one week with a column from Mr. Will, you know, maybe my parents would think, well, gee, maybe this teacher's trying to really push a conservative point of view. If I happened to come home and they saw the column from Ms. Quinlan, maybe they would think they were trying to push the opposite piece. And they would not know unless they asked me if I was willing to tell them about it, or the teacher, like, how is this working in the classroom? Because our teachers work really hard to be balanced and appropriate when it comes to teaching kids about these things. The third right that students have is access to all relevant information freely available in the school and public libraries. And if the school committee were at some point to change any of the language in this policy, you know, obviously, what has evolved a lot since 1980 is the kind of information kids have access to and how, because they have access to pretty much all the information that they would ever want or need. And as we know, that's part of the issue that we're helping kids cope with, because it's too much sometimes information, sometimes information that is very difficult to digest for a variety of reasons. But, you know, not only do we present information to kids through lessons in class, kids have the ability, especially our older students, to do research on their own. And we have a terrific library media center at Shrewsbury High School that has a range of materials. And when students research a topic, they need to be able to access different kinds of points of view on that topic, particularly if it's a controversial topic. So that's something, again, that's very important to note. And I'll ask Mr. Bizidlo to comment a little bit about, you know, how important it is right now that we're teaching kids about media literacy and sources and all these other elements, but I'll ask.
Sure. So as I stated earlier, I think students are flooded with information, particularly through social media and the internet. And part of our job, I feel, is to develop student skills to discern and sift through all that information and find the truth, and really drill down and find what information is relevant, and compare sources, and look on a variety of different sites to try and validate what they're either reading, hearing, or seeing. And I think Dr. Sawyer spoke about his experience at his high school. I don't think it's, there's times where it's not much different in our high school. When we talk about opinion pieces, we share two sides of the opinion and look, and have people try and think about why people are thinking that way, trying to take, trying to take someone's perspective, developing empathy for that, understanding that, and then maybe not even agreeing with it, but certainly trying to understand why people think the way they think and do the things they do. You know, I think part of the other issue that we've seen is, more recently, and I know that we've done this in grade 12, is taking one topic that's in the newspaper, or that's been reported by the news, and looking at the way it's reported by different media outlets, and trying to discern and figure out the differences between how it's reported by each media outlet. I mean, that's a skill that students need to know, I think every adult needs to know, when they're reading information, to find out where that piece is coming from and what's the author's intent and purpose behind that. So I think really these things that we're doing around, trying to teach students around some of these controversial topics, difficult topics, relevant topics in our society, are developing students' critical thinking skills, because we want them to be able to think on their own, and also developing empathy to understand why people are thinking the way they're thinking and doing the things they're doing. And that's really important to have, to make a just society. We just can't consume one side of information and not understand the other person's perspective. And unfortunately, I feel like, as a nation, as a society, and even what we've seen in recent weeks, is that's where we are today. People don't want to listen to each other. They believe what they want to believe. They don't want to have any conversation, and that's really challenging. And I think some of our students are actually seeing the adults model the behavior that is, you know, really difficult for us to manage, and are mimicking some of that behavior within our school, and that's challenging.
So the fourth right, fourth and final right enumerated by the policy, is really the crux of the controversy that we've experienced the past couple of weeks. This is the right to share and express their ideas and opinions. These are students' ideas and opinions on controversial issues, within a forum of fair and open discussion, growing their understanding of the difficult and complex problems they face as citizens in today's world. Now, this was written in 1980. Obviously, this remains true, and I would suggest even more complex than it was at that time, to a significant degree. I think it's important for those who are watching to hear directly from Mr. Bizidlo as to what he's communicated about this, and then, you know, some other issues that we are working through and dealing with at the high school with regards to racism. And then I'll have some closing remarks as well, but, Mr. Bizidlo, could you speak a little bit to your perspective?
Sure. So thinking counted recently, the number of years I've been in Shrewsbury, this is my 17th year. And every year since I've been here, we, I've attended the Black History Committee Assembly. And every year, our students in the Black History Committee have done an absolutely fantastic job of trying to celebrate the diverse talents of our student body and celebrating the accomplishments of people of color within our society. I think that's fantastic. It's educational. It's an opportunity for us to showcase the talents of our students, and I've never been disappointed by any of the work they've done. It's truly remarkable. The Black History Committee actually started at 45 Oak Street, when it was at the old high school, and my former and late colleague, Ellen Myers, started the committee with another teacher, and it moved to the high school on 64 Holden Street. So this isn't something new. I think it's unique to our high school. I'm not entirely sure of how many schools in Worcester County actually do all-school assemblies like we do. We pride ourselves in bringing our students down and showing the great work that our students do, including this fantastic group of students that we have this year. But in terms of the assembly, I just want to, like Dr. Sawyer said, I want to share Wednesday prior to February break, it was, it was our 21st annual Black History Assembly. And the Black History Committee, for those that don't know, is a diverse group of students comprised of different races, ethnicities, and backgrounds. And every year, this group comes together and starts working from probably the first day of school or the beginning week of school, all the way until February, to present an assembly to celebrate, to present musical selections, poetry, dance, and historical facts about Black history in America. And again, this year's assembly was viewed by some students, unfortunately with spacing in the auditorium. We had about 250, 300 people within the auditorium to see it live, to give that audience effect, while the rest of the student body watched it via Zoom in their classrooms. It was broadcast via Zoom. During the assembly, a student performed their own original rap program about the murder of George Floyd. The poem took the point of view of George Floyd's mother and a mag- The poem, the poem took the point of view of George Floyd's mother and imagined a devastation felt by, at her son's life being taken by a police officer. While the poem was intended to focus on the particular tragedy, the language used was interpreted by some students and subsequently their families as suggesting that police officers are generally racist and target black people. And they found this to be offensive. While in meeting with the student and speaking with the student and having conversations with members of the Black History Committee, this is not, this was not the intent of the group. But as principal and leader of school, I'm sorry that people are upset by that. I'm sorry that people and community members are upset by that, especially our police officers and their families. Again, the aim of the poem is not, uh, the, that was not the aim of the poem, to disparage anyone, but it's clear that unintended consequences has certainly caused anger and unrest in our community. The after effects certainly have created a difficult environment for some of our students in our, in our school community who've posted various opinions on social media. It's become the topic of controversy among many adults in our community and through public comments on social media. And somehow this is, again, suggested that we're indoctrinating students, uh, in our school. So, the intent of the Black History Committee student group and, and of our school is to celebrate our school's rich diversity, celebrate, uh, and educate students about the accomplishments and achievements of black Americans, to provide students an opportunity to develop empathy and perspective and create a greater sense of belonging, belonging and inclusiveness for all students in our school. And unfortunately, con, the controversy surrounding the student poem detracted from the goals of the committee, and I, as principal, take full responsibility for that. At the high school, we value every student's voice greatly. Over the past days, our assistant principals and student support team and counselors and psychologists have met with several students who have been impacted by this, and they have a wide range of opinions. Other members of our, of our leadership team have done the same. When people bring us in, information regarding any threat, the police are involved. If we have information regarding bullying or cyberbullying and we have evidence of that, we investigate those claims and we provide as much support for students as possible. That has happened since this assembly. Our assistant principals have worked extremely hard to support and identify people in the community who have been, been doing postings and posting things that are inappropriate online and holding people accountable. Our, our school and my job as principal is student safety. It's a number one priority. And we're going to continue to address any threat around, threat, any threatening messages or issues of bullying according to our policies and, and procedures prescribed and written under your jurisdiction. So, you know, as I think about our school in this assembly, this isn't the only assembly we have. I mean, we have scores of assemblies now. Pre-COVID, we'd have four, five, six assemblies a year for the entire student body. But I think our school, again, different from other schools, and I, I stress this to students in the school, is different in the sense that we value students' voices through a variety of activities, whether that's through our speech and debate team and the tournaments they participate in, through our performing arts or visual arts department, or at our all-school meeting. My principal colleagues in our league in Worcester County think I'm a little bit off the rocker when we have everyone come down to the auditorium to have an all-school meeting, when we have two shotgun microphones and students ask me questions the day before Thanksgiving. We haven't had that in two years? That, that's a pretty powerful thing when people, when students have a voice directly to the student council president, our elected officials and governors of the student body, and me to answer their questions directly. I'm unsure if anyone else does that. It's been, uh, something that's been at Shrewsbury High School before my arrival and it's continued on ever since. We've done it online through Zoom, uh, during COVID times. Even when we're isolated at home, we did, uh, multiple meetings. So providing and listening to students to improve our school community is absolutely paramount to what we do. As moving forward in, in my communication to families, I also said we're going to create, uh, a, a forum and, and, and time and space for people to process what happened and opportunities for people to have dialogue, which I think is critically important. And we're going to do that, uh, starting tomorrow, Thursday. We have a number of students who've signed up for that. We have a number of staff who will attend as well. And we're going to do that in a way that's, uh, using appropriate trauma-sensitive norms and protocols so that discussion allows all students to share their perspectives in a respectful environment. Listening to each other, understanding each other, and not necessarily agreeing, is critically important for, for our students and our citizens in our society. So I hope that this series of forums will continue, um, for the remainder of the school year. We still have to outline the days that they will happen, but our plan is to continue them until we move through this, uh, this issue. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the things we've done in response to other forums to engage student leadership around some of the issues we've seen this year, uh, at the high school.
Well, I think it's important to talk about that, Mr. Bizilow, because I know that there have been a couple of situations you've communicated to the school community about situations of, of racism at Shrewsbury High School. And that's something that's important for the community to hear about as well.
Sure, so racism, racism is a real issue in our society. Racism is an issue at Shrewsbury High School, as evidenced by the, the incidents we had, uh, this past fall. This year, we've had two incidents of racist and anti-Semitic graffiti. It affects our community, and I think I want to say this, that those that have been, uh, that, those that we've, uh, identified as the people behind that have been held accountable for that. They've been held responsible for that. I think that because we don't publicize, uh, the discipline of what happens with people, that people think there's this idea that we do nothing. I think our assistant principals have worked incredibly hard at identifying the people who are disrupting our environment and our culture because it's not who we are. I don't think it's, it represents who our entire student body is. But after that incident, after both incidents, we responded to those in the following ways. We convened our student support team, we convened our leadership teams, we met with the students who were impacted, directly impacted, and needed immediate support. We also worked to identify a group of sixty students who could help work on our climate and culture and better understand, uh, the, better understand the issues that we're at work with the hopes of improving our school, improving our school climate and really tearing down walls that divide us. This group additionally attended the Massachusetts Inter, Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association and Mass, and the Massachusetts School Administrators Association, a diversity, equity, inclusion summit. It's a virtual summit. And we've continued to meet with, uh, with this group during advisory periods. And we also have a subgroup of this group of about fifty-five to sixty students who are attending a conference on March eighteenth in a different, uh, a neighboring town around issues of diversity, equity, inclusion. When we think of the people who are responsible for some of the behavior around graffiti and, and the incidents that we've had, uh, in our community, we've also worked to implement restorative practices to ensure that students who are responsible for some of this thing are educated about the impact, the things that they have done and the impact they've had on our community and the hurt they've caused. So we've cycled people through some of those, uh, some of those practices and had people work through that. And there's still a lot to do with this, but I think part of it is engaging the entire school community about this, having conversations, creating those spaces, and then working through the difficult conversations that certainly are uncomfortable for some, but desperately needed in order to bring some balance back into, into the school and what we're seeing. The other piece is, um, you know, teenagers are teenagers, and I say this, right? They have, people have very different opinions as teenagers, and they argue with each other. And they're, have very strong opinions sometimes, too. But I think we have to do our best when we have differing opinions, whether it's the teachers or adults or whoever that is in our community, to model the behaviors that we want and desire to have out of our, have our students. And when we have the vitriol that we've had and the duggin, uh, sides and their unwillingness to communicate with each other, it really, really pains me because it's having, I believe, a substantial detrimental effect on the general welfare of our students and their intellectual, social, and emotional growth. And there's constructive ways to talk about really controversial and sensitive topics, and we have to demonstrate that through our actions. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. So, I think it's, it's important to note that the past couple of weeks have been very difficult for our school community and challenging. There's no question that some of this is due to the discord, uh, among some students regarding the poem presented at the Black History Month Assembly. But much of the outrage and vitriol, as Mr. Bizilow just referenced, is generated by an adult political candidate posting an audio recording of a minor, both on social media and as a campaign advertisement, and then subsequent reactions along with allegations, uh, of a conspiracy that somehow our school district's supposed, quote-unquote, indoctrination of our students is responsible for the very real mental health and emotional health issues that so many of our students are facing, which is just plain not true. It's important for me to say, as your superintendent, that I find using a minor's student's self-expression, no matter how much you may object to its message, for a divisive political campaign or purposes is just wrong. And I hope our community collectively rejects this. I think it's important to note that this is a national-level political strategy, where a political party is promoting the idea that anything schools teach or discuss regarding race is labeled as, quote, "critical race theory," and that this is, quote-unquote, "indoctrinating children to have certain beliefs about issues of race or diversity or equity." Critical race theory was once an obscure graduate-level legal theory, but it's now, uh, been, uh, put forward as if, uh, this part of this grand conspiracy that somehow our teachers are, are indoctrinating children, uh, which to me is ludicrous and without any evidence or merit. The policy we implement in Shrewsbury Public Schools, which we've reviewed this evening, is the antithesis of indoctrination, as it's explicitly about providing sound information to students on controversial topics and helping them to form their own opinions. We don't teach our students what to think, but how to think. I also want to be very clear about two things. Our district supports our students in the Black History Committee and our students of color who face the reality that we live in a society and a community where racism, prejudice, and bias still exist. It would be naive to think otherwise. Unfortunately, as Mr. Bizilow just said, we've been reminded of that in some concrete ways this year. Our district needs to continue to promote diversity and belonging and inclusion and equity in order to counter racism where it exists and make our school communities better for all students. Second, I want to be very clear that our school district supports the police, especially our own local Shrewsbury police. They have been and they'll continue to be excellent partners in keeping our children safe along with all members of our school communities and the town at large. Just this fall, Mr. Bizilow and I were here with Chief Anderson regarding the support of the School Resource Officer Program that we believe is beneficial to our schools. The day after the Black History Month Assembly, in this very room, we had a meeting with our administrative team, with our school resource officers, other Shrewsbury Police Personnel, Fire Department Personnel, Public Buildings Personnel, to do one of our routine tabletop safety and security drills. We recognize the importance of the police to the well-being of our community and our society. And I know that our police also condemn the acts of the few officers who have unjustly taken the lives of citizens, including George Floyd. I know Mr. Bizilow and I both are very proud when Shrewsbury High School graduates become police officers. We want all of our students to feel a sense of belonging and unconditional acceptance in our schools, whether that's students from a fourth-generation Shrewsbury family or a new immigrant to America, whether that student is wealthy or poor, whether that student is gay or straight, whether that student's parent, uh, is a police officer or a teacher, whether or not the student has a learning disability, whether that student is white or a student of color. We are here to serve all students, and we are here to teach them all to think for themselves. I'm proud to be superintendent of a district where the stated policy is students have the right, the right to share and express their ideas and opinions on controversial issues. We have work to do. You heard some of the ways that Mr. Bizilow and his team are working to support the students, as are their, the Black History Committee, uh, faculty advisors. And we will continue to, and we certainly want those students and anyone connected with them and their families, that if there is anything that is occurring with them that is problematic, they need to make sure that we know so that we can support them. At the same time, any student who is receiving any kind of difficulty through social media or at school because they hold a different opinion, an opinion that may be different politically. Clearly, if the, if, if students are expressing something that is out of norms and out of bounds when it becomes to issues of race or ethnicity, that will be dealt with appropriately, as Mr. Bizilow talked about earlier with some of these other incidents. But we also know our students have a variety of perspectives. And having these dialogues in ways that students are able to hear each other and listen respectfully is critical going forward. So, uh, my hope is that the school committee will reaffirm that this, uh, approach and the policy that we've discussed tonight, uh, is, is how we are, are going forward as a school district. And I am, uh, want to signal again, uh, just how important it is that we continue, uh, to be resolute in supporting, uh, the students and being able to express themselves and all of our students and being able to develop them, their, their thinking in ways so that they can think for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you, Mr. Bizilow, for your, uh, presentation. Questions and comments? Mrs. Heffernan?
I'm going to ask you to bear with me. I have a lot of thoughts and a lot of comments, and it's been a, a rough couple of, couple of weeks. But I want to first off thank, um, uh, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Bizilow. I want to thank our administrative staff, many of whom are here and who have been trying to manage both the administrative staff and the, um, teachers, trying to figure out how to, how to continue to have these important conversations in our schools. I want to thank those who joined for public comment, those who've continued to stick with us a couple of hours in, uh, for this, for this dialogue and those tuning in at home. The core values of Shrewsbury Public Schools include teaching equity and tolerance. And I have always believed that was possible in our schools, and I have always believed that was possible in this community. And these last couple of weeks have sadly challenged that reality. The dichotomy troubles me personally, that somehow we cannot say that, uh, particularly as a person who's been in government service my entire career, that we cannot say that we support men and women in blue during, in ga, engaging in service while also condemning acts perpetrated by members of law enforcement acting under color of law. I come to this, uh, position as a prior criminal defense attorney and as a defense attorney of children in Worcester County. I have represented far too many and a disproportionate number of black and brown, particularly boys, uh, in our, in our county, and I have borne witness personally to issues of excessive law enforcement. I know that children have rights, and they're not rights that are written down on a Shrews, Shrewsbury School Committee policy as much as I think this policy is, is absolutely spot-on. Those rights are born out of the Constitution. And one of those most important rights that I strongly believe in is their First Amendment rights. That right to expression, fifty-three years ago, the Supreme Court acknowledged and reaffirmed that they don't shed those rights when they enter the schoolhouse doors. I'm proud that our schools are places of expression. I'm proud of twenty-one years, Mr. Bizilow, of, of supporting that, um, the, the ongoing need to, of, affirm Black History Month, um, through a, through that collective engagement that you do with the entire school committee, or, excuse me, school body. Student expression and any sort of public expression should breed dialogue and not fear. It should challenge opinions and not bring about more division. It should ultimately lead to discourse and not acts of retribution or retaliation. It should ultimately lead to understanding. I applaud the student who drafted this poem. I applaud all the members of the committee, frankly, um, who are brave enough to share their feelings about any topic in a high school. That's a, that's a commendable thing to do, and about a topic of this sensitivity even more so. Students have the right to learn in atmospheres free, or full of respect and free of toler, intolerance. I strongly believe in the possibilities of this district, in our staff at the Shrewsbury Public Schools and in this community to help us find a way back to that respectful place, certainly in our school buildings if we cannot control what happens on the internet. Earlier tonight, we watched fourth graders talk about the issues of belonging and what that looked like at the elementary school level, and it was inspiring, uh, because it's what we want, uh, for our, for our kids. It's what I want for my kids, who, next year, Mr. Bizilow, you're getting one of mine walking through your doors. This is not a district that bans books, and we don't ban ideas, and we don't ban topics. We talk about them, and racism is real and is active in our community until we call it out. We have to do better. We have to do better. I know we have to do better, and our policy is not the problem. It's time for the adults in our community to show the youth how we are going to engage in a complex world, and that is, I think, the conversation that we as a community need to have. It's not just the five of us here. It's something much broader. I think we are on the right path with the policies that we have in place, but there is a fundamentally different conversation that we need to have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heffernan. Ms. Fritz.
Thank you. I also have a few comments, and I think in all my years on the committee, this is one of the most, I'd say, upsetting issues because we saw upset with students, upset with staff, and I think it's unfortunate because the issue was almost hijacked with a little regard to the content or the context of the issue, and it was put on social media, and there was a lot of opinions formed by people on both sides of the issue that did not have the full facts, and that's okay. Everyone's entitled to opinion, but we have to look at what the facts are before we lash out or have comments that are not helpful to students, staff, or administration or anybody in this district. And as a school committee member, I did not appreciate being drawn into a political agenda. If an issue or concern exists in our schools, it needs to be recognized, and it needs to be addressed immediately. The school committee must be a nonpartisan body. Our job is to make good decisions for students, staff, and the community. That's what our role is in the community. We cannot bring our own political bias or our own opinions. We have to look at everything that happens within the community. And when I look at this policy, and I had to do the math, 42 years ago, and I looked at that date, and I wasn't surprised that it was during the, like, when Dr. Collins was our superintendent, and if anybody knew Dr. Collins, he made you think, he made you reflect, and I think that's why, back in 1980, he said, "This is how we're going to educate students." And I have two children who went K through 12 through the Shrewsbury Public Schools at the high school, and they always were involved in discussions that maybe we didn't agree with them, and they're 29 and 27, and we still have difficult conversations that they may not agree with us, but that's what it takes to become critical thinkers. So I was very happy to look at this and see that we're still using this as our policy. And as Ms. Heffernan said, it's a policy. It's on paper, but it's how do we act? What do we do as a community and as a school system? And I want, as a school committee member, that all students be exposed to issues in history as well as current issues and events. I want them to have discussions that respect all sides and perspectives as well as being respectful to each other and look at different opinions. And today, we hear a lot about, we need meaningful discussions, we have to have difficult discussions, and we have to lean into them, but these should not be one-sided discussions. We have to look at both sides. We have to look at the context, and it's not one group to the other. Let's be together. And I know some people today are very reluctant to join in hard discussions or when they're sharing an opinion or providing context because they have a fear of being labeled, and that is not productive. Students, just like adults, must learn from each other and at times agree to disagree. However, blanket assumptions about issues or groups of people are not productive or accurate, and they need to be discussed. And I think when I'm looking at this, this is not easy. It's not a Shrewsbury Public Schools issue. It's not a town issue. I work for a very large corporation. We have DEI. We have these discussions, and they are not easy as adults in a corporate setting. So when our students are having them at a younger age, we have to give some grace to it, and we have to maybe leave the adults out of it at times and let the students work on what they're doing. Again, as a parent, I think it's also up to families to supplement children's education at home and discuss issues openly around your values, your beliefs, and it's not just up to the schools to educate children. It's up to parents, families, and the community as well. I really feel that this policy is as relevant today as it was in 1980, and I think at this point, to stifle voices of any student due to their opinion is far more damaging and biased. We need to focus on encouraging respectful dialogue based on mutual respect, and if you don't agree, listen more, and you may have to agree to disagree. And the other comment I do want to make is during this past couple of weeks, there have been allegations that if the high school wasn't handling things or the community wasn't handling, and I think I, as a parent, who my children, again, went through the school system, our teachers, our staff, and our administrators are always helpful and always there, and maybe we won't agree with that answer, but they are in everyone's best interest, and there was no hiding behind any students or anything. It was handled quickly, and it's still being handled, and we have a lot of work to do on it. So I am very help, you know, happy that we've got this policy to show this has been enforced for 42 years, so thank you.
Mr. Powellich.
The study and discussion of controversial issues at the high school level and beyond is essential for a well-rounded education, and it is difficult for reasons that go beyond the specific contours of the issues being discussed. It is difficult because the discussion of controversial issues inherently involves discomfort. It is the deliberate introduction of discomfort into the student learning experience, and that can be antithetical to the type of environment we try to create in a public school setting. We think of the type of environment we want to foster in a public school. We want students to feel safe, secure, supported. Introducing the feeling of discomfort can feel like a challenge to those. The reality is, all need to coexist. We need our students to feel safe, secure, supported, while also being introduced to things that may make them uncomfortable, learn to cope with those, learn to express their thoughts, learn to talk with one another. And I have no doubt that the delineation there is frequently going to fall on our individual classroom teachers. When it comes to students feeling safe, there are certain constants across the district what is necessary for students to feel safe and secure, but also we need to keep in mind every student comes from a different background, has different perspectives, and is going to react to things differently. In many cases, our staff are going to have to be making individual decisions about where that line is either being crossed or where it's becoming blurred for a student that they're going to need some additional supports. And it occurs to me, as I look at this policy, which I am glad we have in place, and I also, Mrs. Fritz thought of Dr. Collins when we were looking at this tonight, and I am glad we have this in place, but it occurs to me that we, as a school committee, need to make sure that we are considering, especially as we go through budget season, are we providing the resources necessary for our staff to do this? Because we can have conversations at the district level. Our administrators can have conversations at a higher level, but it's going to be in individual classrooms where a lot of this rubber meets the road, and we need to make sure that we are supporting our staff, whether it's professional development, whether it's other types of resources, and helping our students to navigate that balance. We need our students to feel safe, secure, and supported, but we also have to introduce topics that involve discomfort. That is a very difficult balance, and I endlessly applaud educators who are trying to do that on a day-to-day basis.
I agree with everything that's been said, and I won't repeat it. I think the, one thing I want to say is I agree with this policy. I think if we want to take a formal vote or whatever to reaffirm this policy, I'd be fine with that, and I think the other observation is that every now and then stresses occur that you don't look for, you don't ask for, and they reveal who you are. And the way this district has responded to this stress, I think, is exemplary. I think we've learned a lot about how to deal with issues that are emotional, accusations that may not be true, that confrontations. The way this has been handled, particularly by Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Bizzillo, I think is exemplary and models how we can all improve. I'm proud to be a member of this school committee and of this district and of the way the district has responded to this.
Thank you very much. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Bizzillo. We've had many conversations over the last week, last couple of weeks, and I appreciate the support you provided me as a school committee member. And I also want to acknowledge Mr. Bizzillo's assistant principals who are with us tonight, PJ O'Connell, Murray Monopoly, Na Wen, and Jeff Lane. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your support of our high school students. As you can imagine, I have many comments. I've been in front of a lot of correspondence over the last two weeks, and I want to address the specific points regarding Shrewsbury School Committee policy, and this evening I'll be using my time to share notes that I've compiled over the last two weeks. The opinions I'll express here tonight are my own. This is my perspective, and I appreciate you listening. To inform those who may not be aware, not only have I served on the board for seven years, but I'm a parent in this district. My son is a proud graduate of the SHS class of 2020, and I also have one sophomore at SHS currently. My son performed at the Black History Month Assembly as percussionist during musical performances in each of his four years at SHS, and my daughter actually attended two weeks ago. In fact, she made it a point to text me around 11 o'clock on February 16th about how much she enjoyed the assembly. She enjoyed the performances and presentations of her peers, and for me, that was seven hours prior to knowing that there was any issue. So to that end, I just want to make it clear that my goal on this board is to serve the residents, the students, and the staff in this district. Sometimes the goal is achieved by supporting their educators, and sometimes, like this evening, it's necessary to express support for the students directly. At our last meeting, the recorded words of a student were shared by an adult and used to stir controversy. Many in our community see this action for what it is. Others, however, have taken to their keyboards to make unfounded, wildly inaccurate accusations with no evidence against me, against this board, the administration, our educators, and our student body. Within some of the emails and comments that I read, there was no regard to context or intent. I don't think, I'm just guessing, I don't think any of the adults that, you know, reached out were present for the assembly. Again, I wasn't. I know my daughter was. As the conversation over the last weeks, last two weeks have developed, both the committee and the district have been accused of distorting our policies, of finding ways to sneak in radical lessons, or in fact, creating and implementing secret policies to, quote, "indoctrinate" our students. To what end, I'm not sure. This accusation is patently false. Of the many emails received by the board, not one has produced any evidence that our educators implement any secret curriculum or our policies are written to benefit any certain viewpoint, because certainly they are not. It's easy to counter this claim, we've just talked about it over the last 15, 20 minutes, by referring to a 42-year-old policy that's been on the books since 1980, the Basic Rights of Students, Policy 551, to study controversial issues in our classrooms. That's four decades old. It stands the test of time because it's an appropriate approach to education then and now. All student voices deserve to be heard. There has been a lot of political noise framed as outrage over this poem. I will tell you, the real outrage would be warranted if we were to silence our student voices. If we were not to allow them to explore their feelings regarding controversial issues, that would be a disservice to them and indeed the beginning of the indoctrination we've been accused of. I stand firmly behind the policies of this district, and I stand behind our students when they desire to express their opinions, no matter how provocative. And let me be clear, words always have consequence. If you were provided no context and didn't understand the intent, and you weren't in attendance at the assembly, I certainly wasn't, I understand why people would be frustrated. And let's be clear, this was the original work of a student. We should agree to disagree and have respectful dialogue to discuss our differences about any perspective. We all have different perspectives based on our own experiences as human beings. We all share one thing in common here in this town is that we are residents of Shrewsbury. And I want to be clear about the support for our students. I was very moved by the letter received from the Black History Committee, and I want you to know, I want the students to know, that your community very much supports you. I don't want you to perceive our unresponsiveness in the last meeting as a lack of support. As I mentioned during the beginning of public participation, the policy explicitly states that we are not allowed to comment. We're here to listen, and that's stated in Policy Number 123. I've always believed that school committees are an apolitical board. The primary focus should always be about how we can serve the residents and the children within our school committee, and that's what we will continue to do. I know that there will be people that disagree with my comments, and that's okay. I respect your perspective, and I hope you respect mine. So with that, Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
I just want to say I appreciate the school committee's support for our students. The recognition that was an attempt to politicize something out of context has been, caused great distress, especially directly to students, and that's not okay, and that's something that we need to support our students through. I appreciate that some of our students were here this evening. I appreciate some of the faculty who were here this evening supporting them, as well as parents and community members, and that's ultimately how we're going to be able to move through this. We are, remain grappling with very difficult issues. There is no more issue that is more charged in American society today than that of race. And unfortunately, it's being used in a variety of ways for political purposes, and I appreciate and respect that the school committee recognizes that that is a very dangerous road to go down for a local school district. I am hopeful that while we certainly want to be sure that if any of our students experience something at school that causes them concern, that we have outlets and ways to do that and deal with as reasonable adults who can have a dialogue about what happened or what the situation is or what the curriculum is and discuss what it is. But all of that is in the context that, again, we are not going to subject ourselves to being cowed by accusations that somehow the professionals in this district, who have been heroic over the past two years, somehow are not serving our children well, or by accusations that somehow because of a perception of a student's original work that we are teaching students to be anti-police, which could not be further from the truth, or that we're not supportive of our police. And so I do not appreciate the fact that so much time and energy and ultimately things that are causing concern to our students, because our responsibilities as a community are to protect and support our young people, all of them, but particularly those who may be subject unfairly to situations or issues that are with the continued great problem of American society of race and racism. And that's something we will continue to try to support our students and our families of color and all of our students because, as the famous painting by Norman Rockwell of Ruby Bridges, walking into her elementary school in New Orleans with the hatred of white adults screaming racial epithets at her in a time that was not that long ago in America, captured in Norman Rockwell's painting that is titled "The Problem We All Live With." Because racism, of course, is most affecting those students and families of color who are subject to it, but it diminishes all of us and it diminishes our community. I am proud to be a member of this community, and I believe that we can take this very difficult situation and use it to help move forward in an educational way to help our students and our broader community to become better. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, Dr. McGee suggested, do we want to take a motion to reaffirm?
I would move that we reaffirm that policy.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, the motion is to reaffirm Policy Number 551, the right to study controversial issues adopted on February 20th, 1980. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes from our meeting on February 16th, 2022, has been enclosed for review. Any edits or revisions? Okay, there being none, they will be accepted as written. We do need to enter into executive session tonight, therefore, I need a motion that the school committee enter into a the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose 7, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F, and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes; and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Associations, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association; and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose 2, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call vote is required. Mr. Palance?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.